But I just, first of all, just call meeting to order. People can't for the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance? The United States of America. We can start with a roll call. Chris Howard. Frank Linum.
President.
Justin Evans.
President.
Rick Anderson.
President.
Chris George.
President.
Matthew Dyer.
President.
Laura Kemet.
President.
Kenneth McCormick.
President.
Bruce Young.
President.
Okay, thank you. And non-voting committee participants would be Jeff Simonak.
President.
George Farrell.
President.
John Stambrook.
President.
Bob Hayes.
President.
And joining us from Mars, Mac Reed. And Stephen Hemmon.
President.
Guys, thank you for joining us today.
Mr. Scriven.
Yes?
You missed me, Fred Small.
I don't have you on the committee, Fred.
I am the backup for Whitman.
Okay. Thanks, Fred. Marjorie. Sorry for all these technical problems. I'm still admitting people, apparently.
Chris, I'll take care of any advent. You just go right ahead and take care of business.
All right, so first order of business is accepting the minutes from 4:15, 2020?
It's all right. We'll see. See how it goes.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Chris?
Yes.
This is Bruce.
Hi, Bruce.
Before we make the motion to accept the minutes, and I promise you, this is the first and only time I'm going to go through this. But I have a couple of amendments I'd like to offer to the minutes. And but before I do this, just bear with me for about two minutes.
Point of order, Chris? Yes, Bob. You have to have a motion in a second and then go to discussion from Mr. Young. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Chris Howard will second.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
All right. Before I get into what my amendments are, I'd just like to make the following statement. I want to remind everybody that this is the third such regional district agreement committee that has met. And without going into any vivid details about the shortfalls of the last two committees that existed, let's just make sure that we do it. We do it right this time. And that being said, the minutes of the committee should and must reflect an accurate and at least a summarized detail of what happened at each meeting. It is particularly important here because it deals with changing the method of assessment for the first time in 60 years. And the public, these are the public's legal records of the meetings and should reflect the direction of those who are attending this meeting. And at least reflect to assign the work, assign to do the work and come up with a new assessment to be presented to the two towns. That being said, I wish to make the following first motion for the following amendment. I've got actually two motions, so this is the first one. Under paragraph one, it should, under paragraph one, the very end, it should say Chairman Scriven asked for suggestions from committee members as to how to get us past the current impasse that currently exists. Following that, the additions I am asking for are actual summarized comments. After Mr. Howard, of Mr. Anderson, whose summarized comments are incomplete because he actually made a couple of good references to where he stood and where his finance committee stood in relation to an amendment, to amendment. Followed by comments of Mr. Young, which is not presently in there. Mrs. Fitzgerald Kemet, which is not presently in there. Followed by Mr. George and Mr. Evans. That first amendment can be done by Michelle and maybe approved at our next meeting or approved at this meeting pending the amendments that are done by Michelle. That's my first amendment.
Bruce, to be honest, I'm not really clear what you're looking to, how you're looking to amend that. You didn't say anything specific.
Specifically, I'd like the comments of those following individuals added under the comments that are outlined by Mr. Howard and by Mr. Anderson.
Michelle, do you have a record of those specific comments Bruce is referring to?
I have a draft and I have a recording. But I don't, I don't do verbatim in my minutes. And if somebody else would like to take over the minutes and add to verbatim, but I don't do verbatim.
I'm not looking to take over the minutes. I would just like those comments by those particular individuals who represent their respective towns and give the direction in which they are interested in taking this committee. I think those are important for the public record.
Do you have, do you have that?
Yes.
In a draft form? Do you want to send those to me?
I have those summaries in exact form and I'll send it to you. I just didn't want to go through each and every summarized comment that I came up with because I didn't want to take up that much time.
We need to get that, Bruce, so perhaps maybe we hold off on voting the minutes until we have a chance to look at them next time we meet.
Yeah, that would be my other suggestion, that we, Michelle and I work on revising those to reflect those comments of those individuals and then we can, we can take them up at the next meeting.
So at this point, I guess I need a motion to or we could
We need a vote.
We need to, someone needs to withdraw the motion to approve the minute. And if you do that, I'll make a motion to table the minute until the next meeting.
The motion, the motion that Mr. Young made was to amend the minutes, not to accept the minutes. And Mr. Howard seconded that.
I'll wait for the second.
So Bruce, could you, if you rescind your motion to amend, we can then take a motion to hold off on approving the minutes until we meet again, next time.
Okay, is that the way you want to do it?
Seems to make sense to me unless you
Don't you think that would be the most efficient use of time? Then that way, whatever your comments are, Bruce, everybody could review them before the next meeting and then we can take a vote on your amended minutes.
All right, because that would reflect what I'm looking for in my second amendment as well. And that would be the only other thing I would have.
Okay. So Michelle, you'll work with Bruce then?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do you want me to hold off on what my second amendment, the second amendment would be and then work with Michelle and then you can present both of those at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Did notice you had your hand up. Did you have something or was it just related to that?
I just wanted to say, I thought maybe if Bruce could just present his comments in writing, then we could all take a look at them because it might be difficult to follow along, you know, with all of the various amendments. And then that way we can just respond to them at the next meeting.
Yep, I agree. So the next item on the agenda is the actual makeup of the regional agreement committee, amendment committee.
I think, I think we, don't we need to, don't we actually need a motion to table the?
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, Chris, you're right, yeah.
Make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
Okay.
Who's that?
That was Chris George.
Yep.
Who made the motion?
Frank Linum.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll take a roll call vote. Chris Howard?
Yep.
Frank Linum?
Yes.
Justin Evans? Justin?
Yes.
Rick Anderson?
Yes.
Chris George?
Yes.
Matthew Dyer?
Stain.
Laura Kemet?
Yes.
Kenneth McCormick?
Yes.
And Bruce Young?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that, Chris. Yeah, so the next item on the agenda is the makeup of the committee. We had added a couple of members. We went back and realized that we did in fact vote on 10 members. So we've made those adjustments with Mr. Linum and Mr. McCormick. So without any questions, we can just move on, I think, to the next item.
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry?
Oh, excuse me. I just want something to add before I forget.
Okay, Bruce.
Because I noticed that you're allowing an alternate, which I have no problem with, you know, Fred coming in. The board of selectmen in Hanson also elected an alternate for myself.
Yeah. Bruce, just to be clear, I wasn't aware Fred was going to be attending, so he can observe, but I don't intend to, you know, he's standing in, just he's always watching like everyone at home.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
I just didn't want to shortchange her and not give her an opportunity to do the same thing.
Is that Marjorie?
No, no, but no, that is, I think Marilyn Cardilly.
Marilyn Weber.
Weber, yep. And so she's the citizen-at-large alternative and she is listening and she is being provided with all of this information. Just in the event that Bruce isn't able to make it, we want to make sure that we've got full representation.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the primary objectives of our regional committee. And then a timeline, what we talked about last week. Anyone have a motion to set specific objectives?
Shouldn't we hear from the, I thought we were going to
Chris, you skipped over the Mars
I did, I did. I apologize. Yep, I'm sorry. Absolutely, yep. So I made the corrections and that, yes, so thanks, Bruce. Well, at this time, I'll just introduce everyone to Mac Reed and Stephen Hemmon from Mars.
Mr. Scriven, could we just advise people that are not speaking to mute their mics? There's a lot of background noise.
Sure, I can actually do that.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Hoping that's better. This is going to be tough to unmute people as we go here, but I will try to manage that. Actually, it may, it may work better if we have everyone mute themselves for now and see how that works.
Chris, people can unmute themselves by, even if you automatically mute them, they can hit star six and unmute themselves, but whatever, six and a half does any of them.
Okay, thank you.
How do you get to star six?
All right. So as I was saying, we have Mac Reed and Stephen Hemmon from Mars joining us today to help us with some issues and questions we have for them. We had a lot of questions that were submitted and sent off to Mars to have them review them and address them prior to our meeting today. Maybe if we could have both Mac and Steve just introduce themselves and speak to the questions that they received. We all have a copy, I believe, of the questions and the response from Mars. Mac and
Steve or Mac, you can unmute yourself and we'd love to hear from you.
Go ahead, Matt. I'm trying to unmute you. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mac.
As you know, we got over 40 questions. A lot of those questions overlapped and obviously were pretty much all in reference to your regional agreement regarding the assessments. So we have put together a document that we'd like to go over with you and then have you ask questions. I would like to, I don't know, Jeff, are you going to put it up on the screen? I will do that now if I can figure it out. So you're not going to be able to see people's faces. I'm going to put this up on the screen for us, so.
I would add while they're doing that, there was like 30-some questions. We took and summarized a response, trying to answer all of those in format to go over it. And once we finish going over it, then we'll be glad to ask any particular questions. We think by covering this, we've answered all the questions. If we went through question by question, it would take quite a long time, but we'll go back and turn any particular questions people might have. Mac's going to go through and read the responses, then I would answer any questions after that.
All right, why don't you guys start and I'll figure out how to get this up on the screen. Okay. We had a little prep there, as you all know. We went through this regional agreement a couple of years ago. And it was vetted with your town attorneys and the district attorney and the committee at the time, which Bob was the chair of. And so I think most of it is in pretty good shape. And obviously the questions resolve or evolve around your assessment. So we're kind of hoping that you will start with the agreement that we worked on. I'm sorry, I can't turn that off. That we worked on a couple of years ago and just tackle the parts that just tackle the parts that need to be addressed. So anyway, there we go. So
Mac, I would like to just make the statement that the agreement that was worked on for the last couple, last two years has been, was approved by the Department of Education. And Mac indicated both the three attorneys from the town and the region went through and approved it. So the language has been approved. And appears to come down to the question is the statutory method that's in the agreement. All the other parts are acceptable. And so that's what we suggest you start with that because then you're going to take changes in what you have in that agreement that was worked on previously. So Mac, why don't you go ahead through?
You obviously can go back and work on any part of it that you feel necessary. Certainly be happy to do that with you. All right, so Jeff, can you scroll up there a little bit or down a little bit? Yeah, however you want me to go. All right, so I'm going to start where it says, following is our attempt to respond in an efficient way to the list of questions that we have. So a statutory method must be in every regional agreement. A regional agreement can have an agreement or an alternative method which can only be used if every year the regional school committee votes to use it and both towns vote to use it. Otherwise, the assessments revert to the statutory method. So that's pretty clear in the law. An annual assessment can be decreased. There was a question about can an assessment be decreased? And it can be if a town's assessment is at least above the minimum level as that town's minimum local contribution. For a town's assessment to be only at the, the MLC is very rare. The total assessment can go down if enrollment goes down significantly. It can go down if there's an increase in chapter 78. If there's an increase in regional transportation or a decrease should be in regional transportation aid and other income if that goes down. Or there is a change in the foundation budget. But the assessment cannot go below the minimum local contribution. So chapter 78 is calculated by DESE with information from the Department of Revenue. We have a little bit more about that later. Old harmless means that chapter 70 monies coming to a district from the previous year are not decreased. Only minimum aid is provided to the district. Chapter 70 monies come directly to a regional school district and not through the town. An agreement or an alternate method, alternative method of calculating assessments is rarely used in this state. So using either of these methods does not affect the actual bottom line budget. Someone asked if using one system or the other would affect the actual budget? And the answer is no. The budget would remain the same as what was determined by the regional school committee. It's just the way it might be assessed in a different way. So implementation of an amended regional agreement can occur only after it is passed by the regional school committee, is voted in the affirmative by both member towns and is signed off by the commissioner of DESE. A subsequent new law, which might affect language in a regional agreement, does not negate the entire regional agreement. The regional school committee should propose an amendment if this happens. And a law can override a regional agreement. They certainly would not override a whole regional agreement, but a specific part of it. For example, this having a statutory method. A regional school budget must be approved by two-thirds of the member towns. Both towns in the case of a two-town region like Whitman-Hanson. Or it is considered failed. The regional school committee then decides to take the budget or assessments back to the towns for a second vote or lowers that budget and assessments and asks for another vote. If there is no approved budget by July 1st, the commissioner of DESE will normally set a 1/12 budget based on the previous year's budget and assessment. And the proposed new budget and hope that the towns can work out an acceptable budget assessment. If there is no approved budget by December 1st, the commissioner will set the budget and assessment for the fiscal, for that fiscal year. We believe this will be the same process that this year, even with the COVID-19 pandemic. DS, DESE, and Steve can speak to this later, will be issuing guidance on regional budgets and assessments probably next week. The law requires one budget for the district. So Fed costs cannot be split out of the budget to be assessed some other way. Can you scroll up, please, Jeff? Thank you. It is it is certainly possible to transition into a statutory method. And we're assuming that this is something that you probably will be wanting to discuss. This can be done with an agreement or alternative method. Or it can be built into the statutory method with a five-year, for example, phase-in. There is flexibility in how the above minimum local contribution is split. But it must be defined in the regional agreement. MLC is a wealth-based calculation. That is the total property values in the community and income of all the residents. Those are the two factors that are, go into the wealth-based calculation. DESE develops the formula for the wealth factor target share based on data from the Department of Revenue. School committee representation is determined by the regional agreement and must adhere to one of the five approved methods. Use of the statutory method or agreement alternative method does not affect this representation. The current Whitman-Hanson regional agreement requires both towns to vote to agree to allow one town to withdraw from the region. So at this point, no, no one town can vote to say to get out of the region by themselves. The town with which we are, the towns with which we are aware, who considered withdrawing from a region, found that it would cost them more than to stay in the region. Because Whitman-Hanson is a two-town region, the withdrawal of one town would dissolve the region. The only town that has withdrawn from a region, which has had six towns in it or seven towns in it at the time that we know of, did so with a home rule petition from the Massachusetts Legislature. So unless, unless your regional agreement were to allow something different, then you have to go by that until it's changed. So moving from an enrollment-based assessment to the statutory assessment method is a rare situation that has been resolved only in a couple of districts that we are aware of with a phased-in readjustment of the assessments over a five or six-year period. So those are the issues that we believe addressed the majority of your questions.
We get 10%.
And Steve would be happy to address any of your further questions.
Thanks, Mac. I guess it, whoop, what happened?
Chris, do you still want that screen up or can I, can we?
No, I think we're good with that. Thank you. Steve, did you have something?
The only, the issue I would make is that the what clearly I understand is the statutory method that has to be in an agreement or an alternative method. That I think the agreement that we've worked on previously, I said earlier, all those sections have been approved by the department, meaning being your representation school committee and other things that they require to be put in and they've approved it. So then I think this committee, the issue seems to be, and we met before, we were at a meeting a month or two ago, two months ago, and the issue was another statutory method, how would you resolve that? And I think that's where you need to work on the other sections if you want to go review them or change them. And what would happen is you would then, if you were going to came to an agreement on this method or a phase-in method, however you want to go, it would be put in the agreement, then that would have to go into the department for them to review that. Just to make sure that section's in agreeable and also sent to your town councils. And then selectmen get involved in the town, get involved, and you have to get them voted at each town and then the commission would approve it. You wouldn't take it to the towns unless it's been approved by the Department of Education in indicating that if the towns voted it, then he would, the commission would sign off on the agreement.
So it would be a preliminary approval to submit it to the towns then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd get preliminary approval before you submit to the town. Yes, but you take it, you go to the selectmen, you can have public meetings. And but you wouldn't take it to the town meeting for vote until the department said, yes, we'll accept. If they vote it, we'll sign off on it. And the requirement is that all amendments to regional agreements have to be approved by the commissioner. That's in regulations.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, I guess I'll take questions from the members of the committee for Mars representatives. And I think I saw Bruce's hand up first.
Yes, Justin, I have you next.
Yes, thank you, Chris. First of all, you mentioned that it requires a two-thirds vote. I'm assuming you also mean that it also requires a two-thirds vote to approve the assessment as under chapter 16, 7116B as well, correct?
Yeah, two-thirds vote is required to certify the budget and the assessments.
So let me ask you, my next question is this. In order for the school
I will let me just add, whatever the law says, that you would put in the agreement following the laws, correct?
Right, so let me just take it one step further. For a school committee to decide whether they're going to use the statutory method or the alternative method, if the alternative method is in the regional school agreement, does that require a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
Well, we talked about this before. The issue is that the statutory method is the default method. So it's automatically you would be doing the statutory. If you were going to use an alternate method, then the alternate method has to be voted saying, we are now going to use the alternate method. And when it goes to the towns, that they now know that an alternate method is being used. You don't have to vote to necessarily use a statute. That's the default method. You would have to vote to use a alternate method. You would have to vote to use, to use a, um, alternate method.
So let me ask you this then, under what circumstances would the school committee vote to, uh, define which method is going to be used in the assessment?
I don't know, but you're just saying is that that's the default method. That's what they'd have to use. Um, and they'd have to vote to not use that in an alternate method and vote that to send to the towns. And realizing when that happens, that both towns have to agree to use that. If one town says, I don't want to, we don't want to use the alternate method and it automatically defaults back to the statutory.
Okay. So if that's true, if the, if the chapter six, chapter seventy one sixteen says that the school committee shall use the method as prescribed in the regional school agreement, which it does. Does that mean that the school committee automatically uses the agreement method? And then if it gets to the towns and both towns, uh, don't want to do it, it comes, it, uh, then the school committee then uses the, um, uh, use, uses the statutory method?
Yes, saying the agreement method being an alternate agreement method, not the statutory method, an alternate method.
My, my question was if six, if chapter sixteen said, chapter sixteen, which it, which it states that the school committee shall use the, the method in the, in the regional school agreement to determine the assessment. Okay. Does, does that mean the school committee can take a vote to negate that position and go with the statutory method? Or does that mean that the school committee is bound to use the agreement method until it gets to the two towns? And if the two towns do not agree to it, then it comes back to the school committee and they use the statutory method?
Well, the first part of it is that the, that they would be, it's statutory method is the one that is the default method in the, it has to be in agreement. So we've worked to be approved. Then the second piece is if they have, if you have an alternate method in the agreement, then they have to notify the towns and vote to say, we're going to use an alternate method. And they have to provide that information to them. And if one town votes no, then it's going to be statutory method if they wanted to use an alternate method.
Look, I'd like to add, I'd like to try to answer that question too, more specifically.
Go ahead.
School committee can vote at the beginning of which of those assessments, uh, uh, methods they want to use. So to answer your question, the school committee could say, yes, we want to use the alternative method. Or no, we want to use the statutory method. So they would do that prior to it being sent to the town.
And does that require a majority vote or a two thirds vote?
Well, the budget requires a two thirds vote.
And so does that require a two thirds vote too? It would seem that it should.
Well, I, I'll have to be honest with you. I'm really not sure about that.
We'll look that up.
I mean, I wouldn't, I want to commit to that one. Uh, we know that the budget has to be, hold on, let me finish, Bruce. That the two thirds has to be for the budget by law, and so does the, in the assess, in the assessment, that needs to be a two thirds as well.
Right. Okay. Could you check that please?
Okay. Justin, you had a question? Actually, Justin, could I just, before I forget, if you don't mind, I'd like to, uh, ask Mac and Steve. Um, our, whoop, our, uh, committee did vote, um, for, to use the, um, statutory method for this budget. Um, and Michelle, could you remind me what the, uh, what the vote total for that was, vote count? Whoop, Michelle's on mute.
The only, uh, before I get back to that one, the question I have is in your agreement, even in the ninety one agreement, the ninety one was per pupil and that doesn't, because that's prior to it reform. So you really don't have, um, an alternate method. That's why you asked us to come in and update your regional agreement so that you could have a statutory method. And if you want an alternate method, you could. So that's the question is what is, where's the alternate method coming from?
It's in the agreement.
What agreement?
The agreement that's in effect right now.
No, it's not. What's in there now is just per pupil, period. It doesn't say it's an alternate, it says per pupil.
I'm not following you.
It says in the, in Jeff, maybe now been Mac, and if I understand it, if I remember correctly, it is a based on a per pupil basis. You come up with your total cost and whatever the percentage of students from each one you charge. Um, and it does not take into account the wealth method, which has to be used now, which is the statutory method.
Yeah, that's the agreement method. That's what's in our current regional school agreement.
What, what regional school, what current agreement?
That's the ninety one one, Steve, that we still, we have, we do not have a, an amended agreement. We have a ninety one agreement still.
Yeah, but does it say statutory method in it?
It does not because it's out of compliance.
Right. That's my point is you, you, in the agreement, you don't, in any agreement, you don't have an agreement that's talked about statutory or an alternative method. But we will ask the question about if you have a, an agreement that has a statutory and alternate, what's the, what's the vote? Is that a majority or a two thirds? We can ask that.
Mr. Chairman?
One more time before we move on.
Yes, yes, I do. That, what he said, uh, and, and, and forgive me, I, I, um, I have great respect for the man that's talking right now. He has a lot of experience, but we were basically told by Christine Lynch from the DESE that either method is legal to be in the agreement, whether it's the agreement method or the statutory method. I've watched that meeting three times and she never said that you had to have both, both methods appear in your regional school agreement. She said either method was legal, either method was, was proper, proper to use and never made that statement. So could you double check on that?
Yeah, I will absolutely. No, I will ask her. So she said, okay, Bruce, give me a question again.
Well, you made the statement that, but both methods have to appear in the regional school, that have reference to both had to appear. And she basically said that either method could appear in the regional school agreement, that both those methods were perfectly legal. That the agreement method or, or, and statutory method, either one could be used. The only, the only reference she, um, she made to the difference between the two is that the agreement method would have to be approved by both towns in, in order to stand at, at the town meetings.
Bruce, I would say that your two thirds of what you said is correct. Either one of those is legal and you can have, uh, the alternative in there, but we know you have to have the statutory. You can't have an alternative agreement without having the statutory in there.
And they got to be in the agreement because you got to figure out what's the alternative method, how's it being calculated? But we'll call and talk to Chris, okay? Can we move on?
Thank you. Justin?
Thank you. Um, I just, actually I have a question for Steve. So, uh, the last time you met with us, I know, uh, I was there, Ms. Kemet, a few other members of this committee. You calculated, um, the chapter seventy eight by town by, uh, the formula was, was roughly foundation budget, or I think exactly foundation budget less the, uh, minimum required contribution. Ended up being the chapter seventy eight by town and they, we know that because that same chapter seventy eight goes, uh, at least for Whitman. That, that worksheet right there, uh, that same aid goes for, um, South Shore Vtech as well as Norfolk Aggie. Um, the remainder going to Whitman Hansen. Uh, I just wanted to see that this was still true. I, it was a little confusing based on the statement you put up earlier. Um, but as long as this, uh, document still holds, that answers that question. Um.
So I think Justin, we get, the district gets chapter seventy money. Desi does not differentiate chapter seventy by town. Uh, a member of MASC for, developed a formula to break it down to show towns how chapter seventy is appropriated by DO, you know, by DOR or whatever. So Steve came up with this slide here, but the bottom line is Desi does not differentiate by community. So when we get the check, we get the lump sum and it doesn't say Whitman's portion or Hanson's portion. This is an unofficial, so to speak, from Desi. It's somebody from MASC that put together this formula that Steve presented to us that day.
I see. Okay. So the, the numbers are calculated by town, but they are presented to the district as one lump sum.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay. Um, I, I had another question about the, uh, sort of the process of amending a regional agreement. So right now we're working off a nineteen ninety three agreement that does not include all the language that it's supposed to. If this board were to today come up with all the amendments we needed and decide to move it forward, how long would that process take before we are allowed to use that as a budget?
Sure. If you take, if the thing is, if what I was saying earlier, if you take the work that we had done on the regional agreement, uh, the last two years, if you take that, those sections are all up to date and approved by the department. The one area that has been disagreement is the, um, the assessment. If that was taken care of and you went that into the department, pretty sure that could be turned around quickly for approval because there's only one section, they got to approve everything else they've already approved. Then it would go, the school committee then would go to the school committee who would then vote, yes, we want to send this amendment out. It would go out to the towns, to the selectmen to be put on a warrant at the next town meeting. And which they can pass it, it gets passed and it can go into the, back to the department for signature. So as fast as you want to, uh, approve the, if I buy recommendations, take what the, what we previously worked on, it says approved sections, um, and then get your assessment the way you want it, that everybody could live with. Uh, and then, uh, you can move it on and within six months or less.
The day that the commissioner signs it, it becomes effective. Sometimes we get written into, uh, towns want to written in there that if the assessments are going to change, they don't want it to change for, at least for six months. So if you were to agree on this in May, for example, uh, it would be pretty difficult to turn that around for, for July first. But, uh, but anyway, as soon as the commissioner signs it, it's good.
Okay.
But the problem we have now is getting town meetings and getting their approval. The department approval, I think we could get through fairly quickly. Uh, but once you, once your committee agrees on, on that assessment area and you use that agreement, uh, all those sections, and you can take the ninety one and the, and the other one, we have documents, I believe, Mac, that shows what the changes were and what it updated to, and you can go from there because all that work was done. And I don't think anything on those other sections was, was, was in, was a concern.
Well, just as a matter of fact, Justin and maybe Frank, you guys could speak to this. As I remember, the, um, amended agreement was voted down in Whitman.
Um, it was passed over, I believe.
Okay, passed over. Um, so then there's no, no official, you know, this, from Whitman's perspective, other than what we're talking about now.
Right, the assessment area.
There was a discussion surrounding, um, withdrawal of K to eight, but I don't know that that, it didn't register as a vote against.
Okay.
Well, I think it defines in there, if you want to withdraw a section, there's a process you're going to follow if you want to withdraw. Um, but one of the things we've seen a district wanting to do that, when they had, they had a study done, they fit, realized it was going to cost them more money to withdraw. You know, was to stay and you'd now be creating another school committee superintendent and another central office and everything else. So how much more would it cost you to have that?
Right. Thank you, Steve. Chris, you had a question? Chris, uh, George, let me unmute you. Sorry. There we go.
Oh, um, regarding that withdrawal, if I remember correctly, one of the, um, the sticking points was the withdrawal, really an open ended, um, paragraph requires the other town to approve the other town's withdrawal. And at no point does it say after a certain number of tries, it's subject to arbitration or, right? It, it could just go on forever where it seems like one town could drag their feet and, and, um, you know, um, make it difficult to withdraw, even if, even if one of the towns wanted to go ahead. Um, have you seen any language that requires arbitration or anything like that? Um.
Not that I recall. I mean, it, 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 if you're right to withdraw and when you have to go through a process, you want to find out how much it's going to cost you. Remembering the Department of Education will watch carefully because their response will make sure all the children are receiving education. So that they would, you have to have that amendment, agreement approved by them to withdraw. Say you want to go back to where you were when you had two KH in the region. Um, they'd want to make sure that is all done correctly so that children are not hurting their education.
And when we looked into this in the past, we did find that there is one, there is one or two regional agreements that allows only one town to vote themselves out. And, but when we looked at that at the time, uh, Christine Lynch and others there said that they would never allow that to happen again. They somehow stuck it in without somebody looking at it forty or fifty years ago.
Thank you, Mac. Chris, Howard?
Yeah. So I guess I just want to kind of get offense from this group overall. So Mac and Steve, for your benefit, uh, I think a lot has changed since, uh, you were last working with us in terms of that regional agreement. And so because of that, I, I'm not, I, I guess I want to sense from the folks on the, on, on, on the call in terms of their thoughts, in terms of, you know, I, I'm not sure it's going to be quite as simple as, hey, we talked about this two years ago and we're good, other than maybe a couple of fine points here. I, I, I do think it's going to perhaps require some discussion, thought, the feedback from some folks across the town. So I'm certainly open to taking the amended agreement red line and working it through this committee. Uh, but alternatively, Mac and Steve, the other, the other concept we threw out, or I threw out last time was if we literally just changed specific language on the assessment methodology, um, yes, the, the agreement may have some points of non-compliance. However, at the same time, it is our current agreement and it's what, it's what it's in effect today and effect and kind of move us towards resolution in terms of what's best for both towns and, and certainly the students of the town. The hope was certainly the commission would consider that in terms of kind of a phased approach. So, um, I guess two questions. First one to Mac and Steve in terms of, do you think that that's a viable option? And then second question back to the group, what do you think? Because if we're gonna, I think we kind of need to make that decision. Are we, are we working off the ninety one agreement? Are we working off the red line, uh, present?
I can respond with the department will, uh, not approve an agree, an amended agreement until all sections are in compliant. You're not going to approve an agreement that has sections that are not in compliant or fully explanation. There's a document that they provide, which we gladly send to you of all sections that must, what must be in a regional agreement and defined. Doesn't necessarily how it's defined, but it has to be in there in acceptable language that they can do. So if, and if you, if you took the ninety one in, you only wanted to change two or three places and it's not completely, uh, 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 compliant, they're not going to approve it. They don't, they don't approve just sections of it. The whole agreement has to be in compliant for them to agree to the amendments. I said clear, I hope.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm just logically trying to get to the point of, that's still the agreement we have in place today. So technically it's still non-compliant, whether they've approved it or not, because that's what we have.
Right. You got it approved prior to nine ninety one and then a major ninety three comes the Ed Reform Act and then further actions and laws have come that make it so it's not in compliant on all, on all aspects. And, you know, you're talking what thirty years ago, forty years ago. I mean, it's, there's, there's things have changed and so that's why we, we, we worked on the other one to make sure it wasn't compliant. And again, you can go back to those sections and there's something you want to change, so you just brought up about withdrawal, whatever, you can adjust that. But your, your major things, you've got a section so that if they would have, it would not be a major issue with them on all these going through section by section. They know what they've approved.
Chris, Rick had a question.
Oh, okay. Hold on, Rick, let me unmute you. There you go. Good, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so yes, back to Mr. Howard's statement, I, I do concur with him that a lot has changed. And, uh, to Mac and Steve, uh, for the question that I submitted to you in advance of the meeting, there was a significant backup, uh, data. And I just, um, would like to ask if you had an opportunity to look at that data and if you could give an assessment of, uh, what you feel is, uh, you know, a summary perhaps of what the member town contributions have been. And, and, and how in fairness, do you think that, that those are?
No, we don't have that. That wasn't part of what we would know that you want to go back and see what the chapter, the assessments were? Is that what you were talking?
That is correct. That is the information that I provided in advance of this meeting for you to consider.
Yeah. Well, I wanted, did not look that closely at it. We were concerned just with the agreement was and answering the general question. That's a whole nother situation to take a look at if you wanted to do that.
Sure. Well, I, yes, I, I do believe that's a really important aspect of this entire discussion. Because, you know, we, we're looking for, um, you know, an equity issue here when we're looking to renegotiate the terms of our regional agreement. So again, we, I, I for one appreciate the work that you do and, and the fact that you're here to help us negotiate or, or just wade through these waters. But again, I, I don't think an effective discussion could happen unless somebody in your position, uh, can evaluate the data that speaks to each member's town's commitments to education for the past six years.
Really, um, if I could jump in, um, I'm not saying that that isn't relevant, uh, Rick, but I mean, why, why'd you stop at the last six years? Why not go back further? You know, that, that was a question.
I certainly don't have a problem going back further. I think just for simplicity, if we're, we're looking to move forward, and, and, and this has been brought up on more than one occasion, that we're looking to possibly evaluate a phased approach to implement the statutory method. I think that we should be looking at an overall commitment from both towns in the number of years forward and back. That's simply my point, Mr. Chairman.
Chris, Ms. Kement has a question for us.
Oh, I can't see her, sorry. Go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my video cut out at the same time I was muted, so I was completely cut out of.
Mr. Young has a question too.
Cut out of saying anything. So I, I understand what Mr. Anderson is saying, but I would echo what Mr. Scriven is saying. Six years seems rather arbitrary. Why not go back to the beginning? Because I think what you'd find is an ebb and a flow and probably at the end of the day, but I, I lack the empirical data to definitively state this. I think what you'd find is in the balance, there probably was more recently harm to Whitman, but overall probably harm to each town on an ebb and a flow basis. But having said that, I think it, it seems like a really good place to start to, you know, chart our path forward here is to agree, is to agree that the thing that we need to work on are the exit strategy and then the assessment methodology. If we can agree on those two things and that we think in principle that the rest of the agreement is okay. You know, I think most of us came here knowing we were going to talk about statutory. But I liked Mr. George's suggestion about like, see if we could get some arbitration clause in there, because that makes sense. I think, you know, when we looked at it, Chris, George, we had the same concerns. Because, you know, you could see where one town might be disadvantaged by the other town pulling out and then they would unfairly not allow the other town to pull out because of their own financial interests. And that could work either way, either, either town could have that concern. So, and just a question though, for the two gentlemen from Mars. I'm wondering that Chapter 70 sheet that you put up. And, and I know you're saying that somebody, I think Desi came up with that formula to attribute what portion was attributable to Hanson and which portion was attributable to Whitman. But recognizing that when the district gets it, it's one lump sum. And, and I'm just wondering, you know, what degree of confidence do we have in, in those numbers? You know, because I think at the heart of what Whitman, you know, is, is, well, really what we're all discussing is, you know, in part that chapter, in no small part, maybe in almost entirety, is that Chapter 70 money. And then I know, and then just one last question, because I had a lot of these questions, but I couldn't seem to get, get in on the convo. I think Steve had indicated that you could not attribute special education costs to any one town, but yet we know that we've, we know that there have been towns in regional districts who have prefunded, if you will, into a separate account, special education costs. Now, it may not have been through the regional agreement. It may have been outside of that actual agreement through a special assessment. Or I, I don't know what the mechanics are, but we, several of us are aware of towns that have done that. And so I just want to make sure that you're saying that you're not familiar with anything like that or that we've never seen anybody do that.
I can comment what you're talking about. The law allows the towns in, in regions as well to set up a special education reserve account. I'm not thinking of the correct name of.
Yeah.
They can set that up and put money in and that it can be used. The question we got is, can you separate out of a budget, the special education costs and assess differently? Our work department is that's part of your operational budget. It will be part of the budget and you wouldn't separate that out, out necessarily to, to do that. But what can happen is to what you're talking about is they set up a, 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 I'm losing the name on, special education count and then money's put in. So then all of a sudden, one year, if you got hit with the 200,000, you've got money in reserve to pay for that. That's different than, than the region could set that up as well, as well as the towns. There's a lot of control over that account, how it can be used. But we're talking two different things. One is the stabilization thing, it's a stabilization account. You can set up a special stabilization account and just like a building stabilization account to hold the money to use in future years, as opposed to the question we got was can you separate it out of the budget and then assess differently? And our, our understanding and dealing, and maybe Mac has done more with the department said, no, they usually wouldn't agree to that.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's helpful. And I, I don't know who submitted the question, but maybe it just wasn't like worded precisely to describe what we just discussed. I think that that's the concept that's been thrown about is, and, and I think in the end, it eventually gets you to the same place, which is that, for instance, in this case, we know Whitman's special education costs are far, far larger than Hanson's are. And so if, in the interest of equity, you know, as Mr. Anderson and others have alluded to, if we're looking at Chapter 70 money, then, you know, one of the things that has been tossed around in, in conversations has been, well, then maybe we look at the special education. And maybe if, you know, we look at all of that in an aggregate and we look at that mechanism for putting that special education money into that special account, if you will, pre-funding it, that may be a way of reaching some type of an agreement, a, a little bit more equity. So thanks, I appreciate that for, for the answer.
Thank you, Laura. Bruce, you had a question? Let me just unmute you.
Can you hear me now?
You're all set, Bruce.
Okay, thank you. No, I just want to echo the sentiments of Laura. And I think there was one other member who agreed that obviously there's a major issue to go back retroactively and determine what the differences were. If the region used the alternative, the statutory versus the alternative method going back six years. And I would echo the sentiments and say that let's, let's make it the whole, go back the whole nine yards and go back to the beginning, whenever that was, 1994, 1993, with stat, with statutory and follow it all the way through, because I've, I've been hearing that, well, let's go to statutory because of what happened over the past six years. And after all, it's self-correcting. Well, I would think it's only going to be self-correcting if we had four or five vacant shoe factories fall on Hanson and we, we loaded them up with concrete with housing and, and, and other, and other, and other rentals or condominiums. And, and that's the way that, that's the only way that it would be self-correcting over a short period of time. Let's face it, that's not, that's not going to happen. So I would agree with that. The other thing, the other, the other question I had was going back to the so-called wealth factors that basically determine the minimum annual contributions for both, for both towns along with the, with the foundation enrollment as a percentage of foundation budget. And unless, can these gentlemen expand on those factors? Because that's what I was looking for, because the formula is very complex. And even though I'm a financial and detailed and accounting guy, I get lost in the translation when we go into some of the explanations surrounding the wealth-based factors. And I think that's a major hurdle when we try to sell this. If we, if we come up with the, something that leads us to the statutory method, trying to sell this to, to the town meeting in Hanson. Why are we all of a sudden, after 60 years, considered the entity that can provide more money over and above the town, the town of Whitman? So I wonder if you can expand on what those wealth-based factors are other than just the simple terms like income and assessments? For example, a commercial, industrial and personal property also in there? Because I looked up the personal, those factors and it's, Whitman has probably $80 million more in assessed valuation in that factor and is local, local cherry sheets receipts to both towns also considered a factor? Because Whitman gets more than twice as much local cherry sheet money to support their own departments as Hanson. So.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Yep, Steve or Mac, could you respond to that?
Let me put it this way, it would be, we'd have to set up another time to go over and explain how that's all done. It's not simply now here. The factor is, is the wealth is based on the two things, which are the wealth of the community is based on the value of all the properties, whether they're commercial or whether they're homes, but all the properties. And then the income from all the people. The, well, the assessors send information into the Department of Revenue and that's where that information comes from. We file our taxes and then the, from the Department of Revenue, from the tax, they send them, what's the, everybody's income? What do they get to come up with a total? Then they have a formula that sets up the value of the, of the, of the value of the, of the property and the value of the income and the income. And they come up with a calculation and they get to what they call is a target share, which shows those communities that are, that have wealth, they should, the concept is that they should pay more for the education that they can afford to and those that aren't, that they can have some, they will get relief into the state that they can then, get those children will receive an equal education. Would be glad to at some point in time, if you want to separate from this and sit down with, not sit down, we can't anymore right now, but do some, you'll know how that's calculated and go through and deep, and even get the Department of Education on the line to help out with that. So if people want to get more information about that, they can, we could arrange.
Thank you, Steve. Steve, I actually just thought of a question I, I meant to ask before. And it is in regards to how we voted as a school committee to use the statutory method. Are you aware of, at what point, is it too late to reconsider that vote? Can you explain that to me?
Well, have you certified your budget?
No.
Okay, you haven't certified it. And again, there's going to be a, an advisory coming out from the Department of Education Friday, I believe. They've asked Mars, we've looked at it. It's coming out Friday and it'll talk about the certifications process, especially considering this COVID-19 and that town meetings can't meet or you couldn't get a vote. So again, I, I refer to that advisory that'll be coming out. Jeff will get that and he can pass that on to everybody.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. If there aren't any other questions for Steve and Mac, I'd, I'd like to move on to our, you know, setting our primary objectives.
And we would, can we be excused?
I would like to. Yes, thank you very much for your time, both Mac and Steve.
Okay, all right.
Steve and Mac, I'm going to get you some more questions. I had a question for Mr. Howard. I'm, I'm jotting other questions down that, so you'll be getting some more questions from us, okay?
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Yeah, we're going to leave. Bye-bye.
Steve, Mac, thank you both.
All right.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, yeah, as I was saying, I'd like to move on and establish our primary objectives. Does anyone like to make a motion to establish specific objectives? I see Bruce. Go ahead, Bruce.
I'm not making a motion, but I'd make a suggestion. I'd make a suggestion based on all.
Did I lose you, Bruce? Molly, the one that can't see Bruce anymore and can't hear him?
No.
I can't hear him. Here he is.
Okay.
I would make a suggestion that based on all the information that I, I just heard, some of which I haven't heard before. And, and, and basically that I believe myself and probably other people included have some suggestions and proposals they'd like to put together for this committee to consider moving forward. I think we should take at least a week to do that, consider what's just been said by Mars. And then come back and have the various committee members who would like to make certain proposals on how they think we should proceed and what methods of, of changing the assessment that we've had for 60 years. We could present those at the next meeting and then come up with a, with a motion on how, on how to move forward and what the majority of the, how the majority of the committee thinks we should move forward.
Thanks, Bruce. Justin, you had a question or comment? Sorry, Justin, one second.
He's muted.
Yeah.
Got it. Nope.
I just want to say, to say to Bruce's point, we have about eight weeks to solve this year's budget, get a budget assessed by the school committee or, and pass it through both towns, or we're going to 112 that statutory method. So want to put a timeline on there if we're going to push back a few weeks.
Laura.
Hi, yeah, thanks, sorry. So I totally agree, Justin, that we do have a bit of a gun to our head. I think realistically though, we can, at least I can see, and I do tend to be a half glass full kind of gal, but, you know, times are tough and, you know, it's unprecedented, as we've heard people say a million times. I'm, I'm honestly thinking that, given everything that's going on, we may end up going to the 112, but I'm not saying we shouldn't kill ourselves to still try to get to that finish line anyway. Just, you know, being realistic about where we may end up despite our best efforts.
Thank you, Laura. I saw Rick had a. Sorry, Rick, I'm trying to unmute you. It's not working. Jeff, can you unmute Rick, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it right now. Yep. I'm going to just unmute everybody. And then you can mute yourself. So Rick, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to say that the Town of Whitman Finance Committee has been diligently working on Article 2. And we have a place center within Article 2 of our warrant. And currently, the figure is at $15,156,235. And which is about 36% above the required minimum contribution. And I think it's time for the school committee to move forward and set a budget. And hopefully Hanson can, is prepared to put their numbers together. And hopefully their number comes in at 30% above the required minimum contribution. And we could move past this and move on to what's in the best interest of the students and educators of the regional district. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Rick. Chris Howard?
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm working on that, but thank you. I can't get him.
Good. He's, he's there.
Okay.
Before Mr. Hayes just, scope of this committee is the regional agreement, right? So to the extent we can develop something that impasse through the agreement, fantastic. Budget discussion we have tonight, which as part of normal school committee. I think to Bruce's earlier point, if we want to look at what we can do and come up with, I think that's, I think that's a fine idea. I would just request that Jeff or Michelle or whoever it is, we do have a number of folks as part of this RAC group that were not part of previous conversations. So it would probably be helpful to give them a copy of the, if we don't already have it, if you have it, great. But just of the agreement with the redline changes, so everyone can kind of look at that and then think about how to proceed. You know, I'll, I'll, I'll save my piece on the budget for tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else have any?
Justin.
You down there?
Yep, I just, I, I agree with Mr. Howard, we're not discussing the budget tonight. I mean, they are linked, it's difficult, Rick, because I get where you're coming from. It's like, you know, they're linked, it's, there's no way to completely, it's like Siamese twins almost. We can't completely, you know, you know, separate them. But for the purposes of open meeting law and what we posted and all that stuff, you know, I think we've got to try to stick in this conversation with the agreement method, you know, with the, with the agreement period. And then hopefully at the school committee meeting and maybe have Frank call John and have some conversations to further align the budget conversation. I, I don't know, I know they're both on the phone here and I know they've had early preliminary conversations, but I don't know how in-depth they've gotten on the numbers. And of course, I, I know you know this, Rick, because, you know, you know, you spent so much time on FinCom and you're probably living and breathing it every day. You know, there's so many uncertainties right now that it's beyond, it's beyond the pale.
Thank you, Laura.
Justin, did you have something to say? I think you're open.
No, I was just trying to see if we could solve this muting issue.
Okay.
In the background.
I'm trying to, thanks.
Okay, so did anyone else have any comments at this point?
I, I guess I can say that based on the conversation with Mars, I think it is in our best interest to start with the most recent Desi-approved regional agreement and work backwards, rather than forwards from the 91 agreement. backwards, rather than forwards from the 91 agreement.
Right.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're going to hold off until next week to determine our primary objective. With, without any other questions or comments, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay.
When, when do you want to set that meeting for?
I'm available.
Before we adjourn?
Yeah, I'm available anytime, so I will defer to any of those who have scheduling conflict, so I don't know if you want to pick the same time next week, Jeff, and start from there, or?
Michelle wants to speak, so you may want to unmute her.
Okay, there she is, yep. I'm still having trouble, Jeff.
You have to unmute Michelle.
Right. We're having some technical difficulties here.
You have, there you go.
No, I didn't do that, Jeff did. Go ahead.
So I'm sorry, I didn't get who seconded, who motioned and seconded, because I can't tell whose voice it is. So, say your names.
Sure, Bruce Young made the motion, and I think Bob Hayes seconded, is that correct, Bob?
No.
No?
No, he's not a voting member.
I made the second.
Oh, Frank.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
However, we haven't set another meeting yet, so we may want to decide on that before we.
Correct, yep.
Adjourn.
So, Jeff, I could do this time next?
I was going to say, will people be ready with their information for next week? What I, what I don't want to do is, is sit here, I love all you guys, but sit here for another meeting, and then schedule a meeting for the next week. So, if we could, if we can be ready to come up with some proposals, I'm, I'm good with that. Otherwise, I'll, I'll recommend two weeks. So if we, if people will be ready to go next week, we can do that.
I'd like, I'd like to schedule for next week and just keep the momentum going here. I appreciate all of us getting together and everyone's time, and I'd really like to.
So, when do you want the proposal submitted by, Chris?
Yeah, that's a good point. We were really scrambling to answer all the questions and get them submitted, rather. So, if we have additional questions, and we are going to meet again at this time next week, why don't, I guess we could say?
Friday, and then we can put it together by Monday?
Friday, have all the questions in for Friday.
Mr. Hayes has a question.
Yep, there you go, Bob.
It'd be pertinent to see what comes out of school committee this evening, and see if we're going to require another school committee meeting next Wednesday. And with both of that, both of those school committee meetings, if they both have to happen, it might be better to have this meeting on Thursday of next week, and you may have more information. I'm just, I'm not saying you will, I'm saying you may have more information that may be pertinent to what's going to help move this along.
Laura and I have yoga on Thursdays.
That's nice.
Chris George has something here.
He has yoga, too.
Go ahead, Chris.
I mean, not that I, every day, but is there?
Audio's a little choppy, could you start again?
Sure, not that I want to meet every day, but is there any reason why we couldn't put two meetings on the calendar for next week? I mean, if we have questions, if we have.
To meet as often as needed.
Right, I mean, you know, we got to publish the agenda, but, you know, if we have questions that still need to be answered, if people are going to send in proposals that we want to discuss, I have a feeling it's going to take more than an hour, regardless of what information we have from school committee.
Yeah, I think that's true, and I'm wondering, you know, would it make sense to try to collect, you know, the, I feel bad, because I think Michelle ends up being like the, you know, repository for all of this stuff, and I'm just wondering if each town could kind of coordinate and collect, you know, the things that they'd like to see in, in the agreement, or the, at least in the discussion that we're going to have, and just a bit more of a coordinated effort, I think, might, might serve us well in terms of time efficiency.
Good idea, Frank. I have a draft of the, what I believe was the last iteration of the new agreement, and on the top, it's dated June 2018. I wanted to verify that that was, in fact, the last iteration.
Yes.
Okay, so we should all be working off that document in order to have some continuity and understanding where.
Agreed, could we possibly impose upon Michelle to circulate that to all the members, just so that we're all absolutely on the same sheet of music here?
Absolutely, Laura, we'll have that out.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Thank you.
Did we pick a day yet? Is it going to be Wednesday next week? Because unfortunately, with COVID-19, I can't attend every single meeting every day. It's just going to be nearly impossible.
Sure, sure, yep, thank you.
Rick.
Mr. Chairman, I, there was a proposal for a meeting on Thursday, I would concur with that recommendation.
Yeah, same here. I, I think it's, because most of us are also listening, even if we're not participating in the school committee, we're listening to that, too. And as much as I love you guys, you know, it'd be nice to break it up between two days, maybe.
Frank, do we have a capital committee next Thursday?
On the 30th, yes.
We're going to be doing FinCom, it's going to start meeting, you know, in town of Hanson more often, so, you know, there are very few days left in the week, too. Unfortunately, I'm not saying that I'm not all.
Yep. So, what time's your meeting Thursday, Justin? Is there a way to squeeze us in, or?
I believe it's 4:30.
Could we do something later in the evening, or anyone object to that?
Later's okay.
Later's all right with me.
What time would you suggest, Justin, considering you have the conflict?
Oh, that's a long meeting. Something after 6:00.
Okay.
I, I think you're being overly optimistic.
Even that's optimistic, yeah.
Seven.
Seven, okay, yep. All right, why don't we shoot for seven next week, then, on a Thursday?
Seven o'clock Thursday, that's fine.
Right, okay, with that, then, I guess I'd take a roll call vote to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think we have a motion already, thank you. Just want to get my roll call here, so I can start with Chris Howard? Are you unmuted?
Yes, he's there.
Okay. Justin Evans?
Yes.
Bruce Young?
Yes.
Frank Lyman?
A longtime former executive, select.
Missed that, was that an affirmative?
Thank you, showing your age.
Laura?
Yes.
Chris George?
Yes.
Rick Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mac?
Yes.
Okay. Gentlemen from the Hanson FinCom, I'm sorry, I don't have your name, I.
Ken McCormick.
Ken.
Okay, thank you. I believe that's everybody at this point.
One, two, three, and yourself.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Nice, Chris.
Okay, thank you all for your time, very much appreciated, we'll see you next week.
Take care, stay safe.